Great, so thank you all for joining. Today's July 14th. This is a meeting of the Sustainability and Environment Committee. It's actually a joint meeting with the Maintenance and Development Committee, since we'll be discussing some inter tangled and interrelated issues that go through both of our committees. So I'm Jesse Letterman, Chairman of the Sustainability and Environment Committee. We have Counselor Walsh, Chairman of the Maintenance, Chairwoman of the Maintenance and Development Committee. And we are also joined by Tracy Whitfield, the Vice President of the City Council. We're recording this meeting in compliance with the current open meeting lot orders. So this will be posted and available on the Focus Springfield Municipal Meetings page on YouTube for folks to watch in the future. And our two agenda items for today are an update and discussion on the Springfield Climate Action and Resilience Plan, as well as a discussion on the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which is part of the plan as well. We have three guests with us. So if you, I think folks know Pat, I think everybody knows Pat and may know Catherine, but if you all just want to introduce yourselves briefly for folks who may not be as familiar with you. Pat, we'll start with you, although I think we all know you, so.
But thank you, Counsel Letterman. Patrick Sullivan, I'm the Director of Parks, Buildings and Recreation Management, and we're pleased to be reporting out where we are in the process. And we've had a strong worker relationship with Catherine Rattay over the years and getting to this point with the city of Springfield.
Great, Catherine?
For letting me be here, I'm Catherine Rattay. I work at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I manage the Environment and Land Use Section, and I've been collaborating with the city for about 10 years on the climate action work. And I'm very happy to present information on the status that Patrick has achieved, especially in the area of trees. You'll be really excited to learn, but all the work that Gerard and Patrick and all of you have done on the status of implementing the Strong Healthy Just Plan.
Great, Gerard?
Hi, I'm Gerard Kieran, and I also work with the city of Springfield. I work in a past department and I'm the Sustainability Coordinator for the city.
That's great. Thank you all for being here. And so I think we will begin with Catherine, just to give us a quick overview and history of the plan itself, and then to talk with us a little bit about what goals within the plan have been achieved, what goals are ongoing, and what goals we may have not reached yet. And then we'll move to Pat for the kind of more direct facility side of the conversation. So Catherine, I'll turn it over to you. I will say, I was just reviewing the plan here before the meeting, and it was great to see all those pictures of those community meetings that we held. You know, it feels like so long ago, especially with the pandemic. But I have to say, you know, I remember being involved in that during my time consulting, and I would say probably one of the most community-involved processes that the city's ever undertaken. So I'm excited to hear where we're at, and we'll turn it over to you, Catherine. You should be able to share your screen as well.
Okay, thank you. So yes, and the, oh, have I frozen or have you guys frozen? Okay, here I am. So yes, and the community-driven development of this plan has been continued in terms of the implementation. So as Counselor Letterman said, the plan was developed in collaboration. The city engaged the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and we engaged the Public Health Institute of Western Mass and Arise for Social Justice. And then UMass also participated. And then the plan was completed and launched, and the city applied for a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant immediately to work on implementation, and was not funded for the first grant, but then applied again and was funded for a significant grant related to trees and establishment of the tree nursery. And then applied for a third municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, which enabled us to reconvene a joint council of city department heads, as well as resident leaders and representatives from the community-based organizations, which now include Wayfinders, Neighbor to Neighbor, as well as Arise for Social Justice, and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and of course, the Public Health Institute of Western Mass, and the city disaster recovery. Tina Sullivan and Gerard have been very closely connected to all this work. So the status of the plan is, whoops, I gotta get where I could advance, is really positive, so 81% complete. So the plan includes very many recommendations, but when the plan was completed in 2017, the city prioritized 54 top recommendations. And so we're talking about the top 54 priority recommendations are 81% complete. And then, as part of the recent work, the city engaged a communications consultant to do an assessment of how the city communicates with residents related to disasters and how residents receive that communication. And so that was a big piece of this work that, again, has been very productive. As part of this work, it was really important to make sure that this residents, especially frontline residents, black and brown residents, environmental justice residents, understood what the city has in place in terms of responding to disasters. So we had Bob Hassett, recently retired Emergency Management Director, participating throughout this process. So again, the plan had a dual focus. It's a plan that will, if, you know, when implemented, as it's implemented, will reduce the city's greenhouse gas emissions by 80% by 2050. Obviously, that was the old goal from the, you know, from before we had failed to make as much progress as we had hoped to make. And now the Commonwealth is committed to net zero emissions by 2050. So it's time for the city of Springfield to update the plan to be in sync with that. And again, the city has taken advantage of, the Department of Energy Resources offers technical assistance through the regional planning associations, and the city has applied for funding to update the greenhouse gas emissions inventory and also to get started on a net zero emissions plan for the city. So within the categories of actions, they were sorted into these eight categories, building confidence in the city. So again, this was, this is a climate justice plan. It is not just a climate action resilience plan. It has an explicit focus on social justice and on addressing racial equity. And so there was a big focus on building confidence in the city for residents to feel confident that when the city tells them what to do, they will, you know, do what is important to do in the event of a disaster and have confidence that they're getting good information. So within that category, six of the strategies are completed, seven are in progress, and one is pending. In the strategy of getting around, which is reducing greenhouse gas emissions from transportation, four are completed, one is in progress, and three are pending. With energy efficiency, three are completed, I'm sorry, one is completed, one is progress. Greening the grid, again, five are completed. This is the transition to clean, safe, sustainable energy, obviously really focusing on solar right now for Springfield. In terms of having resilient infrastructure, two strategies have, one is completed, one is in progress. The urban forest is the big star. All of the strategies in the category of the urban forest have been acted upon and implemented. And again, I think this speaks to, you know, how that department within the city took this plan very seriously. Alex Sherman, the forester, had been hired right when this planning process was happening. Was engaged at the very beginning, and again, seems to have really, obviously, under his guidance, taken this plan as, you know, his blueprint. And in the category of human resilience, none of the strategies have been completed, but one is in progress, and then zero waste, six are strategies, one's complete, and one is in progress. This is information that, I apologize, I should have taken it out, related to educating residents. So this is just a quick summary about the information from the communications assessment. One big thing that came up with that was that the city uses neighborhood councils as a primary communications vector for residents, and that some of them are more effective than others. And so there were lots of recommendations for how the neighborhood councils could improve their communication. And then another piece of work that the city asked us to do was to prepare infographics that the city could share with residents to, again, educate residents on the fact that the city is doing all this work and the status and how much work has been accomplished. And then playful infographic about educating people about the Climate Action Resilience Plan. Some people call it the CARP. I've been trying to get people to call it the Strong Healthy Just Plan, but we were playing on that. And again, how much implementation has happened. A lot of things that people don't necessarily associate with the city having played a role in catalyzing, Valley Bike, Energy Save, the Solarize Springfield Initiative, the pedestrian wayfinding, assisting the city, the PBTA with the eight electric buses, all the bike lanes going from zero bike lanes to 24 miles, and then, of course, encouraging MassSave. And so then we had resources for the people who are watching. So that's the status. And if you want to dive into specifics, then I would share the spreadsheet, which is actually much easier to see the details. So if you want that level of detail, let me know, and we can, I can do that as well.
We definitely want that level of detail, Catherine. If you could share that with us.
Okay.
I guess the question I would have off the bat is what, which, which strategies have not been implemented? In other words, in terms of the pending strategies, where have we not made progress?
Okay. And I see Caterie had, Counselor Walsh?
We'll move to Counselor Walsh.
All right, thanks. Okay, so here's, here's the chart, the Excel chart. So here, and again, is this big enough? Can you see this, or is it, should I make it? Okay, so, so here's the details. So the analysis of the status of the city's core plans, that's been ongoing. You know, the city's been making progress. So we said green was done, yellow is ongoing or in progress, and then red is, you know, not acted on yet. So again, highlighting workforce development underway. The city has hired the racial equity, Chris Mary Gonzalez, and also another piece of this funding. When I helped the city write the grant for the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, we did include funding for the city to join the Government Alliance on Race and Equity and start work on a racial equity impact assessment. The city chose to take that money and give it to Leah G.'s office to do an assessment internally of hiring, diversity hiring, so decided to focus there. So that's underway. The resilient Springfield website, that was up and running for three years, but then it was taken down. It was not funded. So it was accomplished and then is not happening anymore. So I guess I should go, do you want me to just jump to the red ones, Jesse, or do you want me?
Just the one, just for the purposes of this weekend, because I know.
Okay, all right. All right, so we had this recommendation to work with the Business Improvement District and Chamber on a Transportation Demand Management Coordinator. The city has not hired one. We had, encourage the city to work to encourage employers to provide ride home. That hasn't happened. Encourage colleges to participate in the PBTA PASS program so that there would be a comparable thing in Hampton County, as there is in Hampshire County. That hasn't happened. Creating an annual energy performance tracking system for commercial and multifamily properties, that hasn't happened. Passing a resolution by the mayor and city councils stating support for solar goals and strategies that were included in the plan, that hasn't happened, but there has been a lot of support on solar. Researching the feasibility of adopting an ordinance requiring consideration of solar, sending experts and city staff to participate in statewide discussions, that hasn't happened. But again, there has been lots of action on solar. This was, you know, a very aggressive idea to try to get the utilities to provide really energy-efficient air conditioners. I should say, this should not really say no action, because the Mass Clean Energy Center has been having programs that promote heat pumps, and they're, you know, really super energy efficient. We just haven't gotten that connected to the, to, you know, to be getting them free with MassSave, but there has been progress. And then we suggested that the city would have a requirement for air conditioning in new multifamily, that hasn't happened. Using regulatory means, dealing with demolition delay, that encouraging adaptive reuse, that hasn't happened. But so, you know, basically, there was a ton of action. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped over some. No, I didn't. Yeah, so, so a lot, basically, of the 54 priority, again, 81% have been acted upon, so.
No, that's fantastic.
That's very impressive.
Don't want to highlight what we haven't done, but did want to get an idea, because maybe we can be of assistance there. Counsel Walsh, you had a question?
Yes, I did. Catherine, I have to say, that's a very impressive body of work. Did you, did you do that all yourself, or did my daughter-in-law Shannon have anything to do with it?
Well, Shannon has worked on this, but I mean, this is not, this is just PBPC documenting what the city has done. This is all the city, you know, I mean, it's the city and collaborators, but it's all been making it happen. It's just, you know, we've been keeping track, I've been keeping track of it, but, yeah, it's what you all are doing.
I think it's fabulous information to be sharing with people, but you know what I'm most interested in? The first block you had there, building confidence in the city.
Yeah.
Was there like a baseline? Did you like start from like 8% and it went to 80? Or, I mean, where were we with people being confident in the city?
That's a good point. So we, the Commonwealth, when they launched the municipal vulnerability preparedness program, they decided to settle on this community resilience building workshop that the Nature Conservancy had prepared and tested. So it's an eight-hour workshop, and every city or town in the Commonwealth that gets certified has to go through this workshop. So we facilitated it with, we happened to get the funding right as we were completing the Climate Action Resilience Plan. So we had this day-long workshop, and it included city officials and representatives from community-based organizations. And of course, we're all residents of Springfield, but we weren't necessarily the target audience. But in the course of that workshop, the lack of confidence from residents, particularly black and brown residents, was expressed throughout the workshop, but it was not expressed in a quantifiable manner. And Pat was there, Jesse was there, Gerard wasn't there at the time his position was created after. But if you guys want to chime in, but it was, so it's documented in the report. So there's a grid that the city did, that when you do the municipal vulnerability preparedness, you focus on the physical, the gray infrastructure, the natural environment, and humans. And when we did all the grid on the humans, which I can send you, it was, you know, just issues. A lot of it, a lot of the narrative comments stemmed from after the tornado, the feeling that the majority white neighborhoods were responded to better than the majority black and brown neighborhoods. And that was a feeling that was expressed throughout the workshop. But it was not measurable, and we should figure out how to do that. That's a good point.
And you know, someone just asked me this the other day, and I don't know if you broke it down as far as age demographics, but someone was asking me, what do we have in place for seniors? I mean, did you look into, into that, if there's tornado, disaster, whatever? Because so many of them live alone.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Is that even in place for seniors?
Yes, there is. There's a lot in place. And the Public Health Institute of Western Mass has been working on the healthy aging work for the city of Springfield for the last couple of years in collaboration with the Senior Elder Affairs. But the, the, thank you. The vulnerability assessment factored in the age, and if there were, and that's why, actually, some neighborhoods came up as particularly vulnerable, because they had a lot of older, single women living there. So that was definitely, when you look at the map, the vulnerability assessment did highlight that.
Okay, Pat, some of these positions that they're referring to, new positions already, the positions the Parks Department to create?
Oh, Pat, you're muted.
You're muted.
I didn't see any of the positions that she had listed here were related to my department.
Okay.
Yeah, because Pat made the facilities engineer sustainability coordinator and created that position. But the other one, the Transportation Demand Management, would be more logical in the Department of Public Works or maybe Planning.
And that would be a key position, because we need to get more energy efficiency with our vehicles and just getting the information up to residents on the importance of energy efficiency in vehicles.
And would there be a listing of like, we could look at maybe those positions and see if there's anything that Jesse, myself, or Tracy could advocate for. We certainly could advocate for some of the resolves. I thought we had actually, I know we did the paper bags, the plastic bags.
Right.
We've done those things, yeah.
Yeah.
We did the demo delay as well, actually.
That's what I thought, too, yeah.
We didn't. So I'll put that in.
We didn't do the solar one, but we could. I think the solar piece, as you said, you know, there has been some progress on solar, and we can talk about that more, too.
But not, not every neighborhood.
And COVID's had a little bit of an impact too, while some of these. Yeah.
I don't think every neighborhood can have solar, can they?
Well, that's probably a discussion we have to have. I think more so that this was talking about solar in the municipal buildings and things like that, which we can talk more about when we get to Pat's piece, because I do, I do see Counselor Walsh, Counselor Whitfield's hand is up, so maybe we'll hear from Counsel Whitfield, and then.
All right, I will put my hand down.
That'll be a good transition to Counsel Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering if we have access to this report, because I don't ever remember seeing this before.
Yes, we absolutely do. So it's on the, so we'll send out, I think Kelly may have already forwarded, if not, she will, everything we have today. And then the report itself is right on this page that I'll put in the chat, which is on the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's page. And this has the report, the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, the chart of all the actions, and the vulnerability assessment.
And all these PowerPoints are on the disaster recovery webpage for the city. If you go there, you'll find all this stuff, all these PowerPoints and everything.
So.
Counsel Walsh?
Well, not to be a spoilsport, but was there anything in the 20% that wasn't looked at or done that you had a particular interest in? I know you said 81% of the things were done.
That I feel is like really missing?
Yeah.
No, I can't say that there was one of those that I was like, oh my gosh, why didn't we do that? No, I think really good progress.
Yeah, I think 81% is great.
I think so, too. You know, when this was developed, the big thing we all said in the meetings was, you know, this can't just sit on a shelf, right? You know, develop a whole action plan. And so, you know, too often, there's just not enough funding or not enough support from different levels of government, and I think that really hasn't been the case here. One of the reasons I, you know, actually, you know, I think the whole council was very supportive of the creation of the Sustainability Coordinator back in 2018. We did that in 2018 budget, because we wanted, you know, to really put it, you know, into, you know, our sort of goals in the way of a position that could really track it. So that's how we, how we got Gerard. So with that, we'll hand it over to Pat and Gerard to talk about kind of the facility side. A lot of this did fall in facilities, and they've done a lot of work. Patrick, we'll hand it over to you.
Great, well, thank you for having us here tonight. And I, John Kerrigan isn't on with us, but he shares in a lot of these accomplishments with us. So we sent out a PowerPoint. I'm not going to have it even, I don't think there's need to post. I'm kind of gonna just go over it very quickly for you, and then if you have questions, we're here to answer them. So the first part of the PowerPoint is getting you up to speed of what we've done basically over the last year and a half. The middle part, we'll talk about our success with forestry. And the back part is kind of the history of where we got. But we're closing on 30% in energy reduction from our 2007 baseline, which we're very excited. And when we set that baseline with the disaster resiliency grant of a 22% reduction, we were very concerned would we ever get to 22%. So we're just pleased that we're continuing to do well each year. And a lot of that is due to the commitment from Eversource with energy upgrades. The first item through it is we just completed a Greens Community Grant application and grant with a new boiler systems at our facilities at 233 Allen Street. So we've basically taken the last oil-fired boilers offline in the city, and they are now over to a natural gas. And in that, we've also improved our new domestic hot water boilers at that site as well. Again, gone from oil-fired to natural gas. The other thing that's exciting is we started with Eversource, and Gerard's been managing this piece of it, is the electrical vehicle charging station. So we now have two that are up and going. It's Forest Park and Greenleaf Park, and Pete Garvey's included some at the New Lincoln Brightwood School. So we just feel that's going to be very important to have residents and visitors a location in the city where they can charge their vehicles in the city of Springfield. So these have just really come out, Gerard just set up the accounts last week, so they're newly set up online, and if you wanted to come out to see them, we'd be available.
And there's private ones, too, Pat, Pride in Mason Square has them.
Okay, yeah, so it's just important to, I think it'll make people more comfortable to invest in vehicles if they know there's multiple locations across the city where they could charge their vehicles. There's gonna, you're also gonna see a slide that reviews the different locations where we've done energy upgrades, mainly with lighting. But we surpassed over 1.3 million kilowatt hours being saved across the city just with this past year. And then there's just some photos of the different school sites of showing the work, mainly, again, electrical lighting and the work that was accomplished. The next part of the report goes over the forestry. And Catherine, we want to appreciate your help in working with Alex and helping us get to these goals. But 80% of the US population is urban across the country. So that means that trees are very important. They're going to create more livable spaces. They're going to reduce that urban heat island effect. They're going to help intercept and absorb stormwater, and they also increase property values. In city of Springfield, only 30%, 36% of Springfield has existing tree cover, which is below the US Forest Service benchmark of 40%. So part of this grant that we worked with Catherine Rattay on allowed us to do a tree inventory across the city of Springfield. So we have now mapped the entire city of our urban trees. We do have roughly 28,000 trees in the city of Springfield, but it showed that we have a need of anywhere between 30,000 to 40,000 trees that could be planted across the city. So that's going to be very important. Another part of that grant was allowing us to do an expanded propagation greenhouse that is now completed, and we've started the increasing of our tree nursery. So it's going to be important for us to be able to grow our own trees and get them out on the tree belts. And we're always searching for grants. We just applied for a new grant to improve our tree, our forestry operation center. We want to be able to have a resilient forestry center to be able to meet storms. So we're hoping that we're going to be successful. We just, we're heavily vetted over the last three weeks by DCR in that grant application. We felt that we did well. But for example, last year, when we had those microbursts in August and September, and one of them, we lost six hours of power in the Forest Park neighborhood, and it basically caused a five-hour delay for us to be able to respond, because we couldn't access our equipment, because the power was out, and we didn't have a backup generator for it. So it's going to be hopefully critical that we get that grant to be able to improve forestry operations. And unfortunately, as we're seeing with climate change, these storms are getting more prevalent. We see what's happening out in the West, they're coming here. We've had the warmer weather already this summer, and we've had our share of storms, mainly around Long Meadow and the Enfield area, but we've had past years of storms. So it's going to be very critical. And we would like you, you're both at-large counselors, and Counsel Whitfield, I think you're an at-large counselor as well. We do have that tree planting program that just got extended by another two years in the McKnight, Old Hill, and Upper Hill neighborhood. So as you're out and about, please encourage people to, residents, to accept a tree for that program. It's one of the areas of the city that's underplanted, and the results would be tremendous for those residents if they would accept a tree for their yard. And then just last, going over the part of where we are and how we got to the energy savings in our city. A lot of it has to do with the ESCO program. We do have block seed planned and ready to go. It's, you know, we could use another $30 million in work to accomplish that part of the ESCO program. So that would be new boilers, new domestic hot water systems, motors and drives. And these are in the buildings that are central, high school, Vansicle High School, Commerce. And they're buildings that were renovated or built in the 1985 era, so you don't think of them being old, but they are now in the 30 to 40 atrium, and it's time to update those systems in those buildings. But we've made tremendous progress with our older buildings, and I want to commend the council with that. The New Lincoln Brightwood School is just going to be tremendous. And then, as I indicated, we're saving roughly $3.5 million annually on our fuel savings with the work that we're doing, and that's what allows us to accomplish these goals. And, and just some other statistics. We've removed over 13 million pounds of carbon dioxide from the atmosphere, 20 pounds of sulfur dioxide, and 13,000 pounds of nitrogen oxide. So it's really tremendous, the impact that we're having on the environment. And we just are going to continue. We've got a good roadmap of where we're headed for our energy efficiencies. And then just with going with the solar, we, part of the disaster recovery grant was the rebuilding of the Watershops Pond Dam. And in that is allowing us to put solar on the Brookings School. So those bits seem to have opened up at affordable. So we will be making Brookings solar, and that will be one of the first schools in the city that during a storm could be used for a shelter. one of the first schools in the city that during a storm could be used for a shelter for up to 48 hours running off a shoulder, solar. So we are, we've always wanted to do solar. The problem, many of our buildings are older and they can't take the weight of the added solar panel with snow and so forth. So in the new schools, Pete Garvey is building those to so we can add solar at a later date with those facilities. So that's just a quick overview of where we are. And there's just more detail on the PowerPoint that we gave you.
That's fantastic, Pat. Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Pat and Gerard? And I see councillor Walsh. Oh, councillor, you're muted.
Number one, you've been, I I remember a while ago, you've been on top of energy for quite a while. I think you've had some of the first first grants in the city going going way back to do this. Do you have enough personnel in your department to achieve these goals? Or do you need, do you need more positions or different positions?
I think we need money is what we need. You know, we can always use more personnel, but we, you know, we got a great trade. Our trade staff is up to 40. And so it comes down to the money to make these improvements. As I indicated, the next phase is 30 million. We're looking at grants. We just got the small grant now through Greens Community to do the new boiler system at Allen Street. So we continue to work on grants and so forth. And we're working with the administration on identifying those funds. So we do have time. They're not going to fail tomorrow. But I just wanted you to know that we were constantly putting that plan together. We're always meeting with Catherine Ratain to assist her and making sure we're meeting the goals that she has worked with the city to set forth and with Tina, who's kind of managing this information for the city. So it would be more money than anything that we need.
And, you know, I am really excited about Lincoln Brightwood, but I am more excited that somebody's finally doing something about Homer Street.
Yeah. So that's Debarian Homer is going to be a combination school. And again, that will have those same bells and whistle. I think Pete and Myron indicated, I think they're going to reach the gold status for energy efficiency with that new Brighton Lincoln. So that'll be one of the first buildings in the city that reached that. And those solar stations, charging stations, it's what's going to allow us to reach that goal.
That's fabulous. And that program for accepting a tree, I mean, how would residents know that they they could get trees?
Sure. So we've been doing advertisements. We've been doing special events. They could, they can call 311 and put the request through that way or or contact forestry directly. And we just wanted, we we thought that it was great news. The governor was very happy with the progress we we made. There was a balance left on the grant. So instead of sweeping it, the Commonwealth extended it for another two years. So they appreciate what what we're doing in the city. And I think they're happy with the the progress we made. So it's a compliment to the city that I think we have reached over 1,000 trees planted to date.
Wow.
So it's good. And, you know, it's understandable that some residents might be hesitant. Probably a lot of them might be elderly in that neighborhood and the last thing they want to do is be raking leaves. But it's, it is very, I can't stress, trees are going to be the key, one of the key factors in fighting climate change. We've got to cool down our earth and we've got to reduce that heat island effect. We're also including that in our park restoration projects where we're putting the impervious asphalt. We're going back to gravel paths and so forth. So, you know, anything we can do to reduce asphalt areas and parking lots is going to help us reduce that heat island effect as well.
Okay, yeah. And and obviously, the areas that were impacted by tornado, there were other tree replacement.
Yeah, we did a lot in the tornado neighborhood. I'd like to see a little bit more money. We asked if 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 hopefully someday we can just make it a citywide program, because we did have that October 31st snowstorm where basically every neighborhood was impacted with trees. And just, I live in East Forest Park and there's many areas for setback plantings. And we're looking at the city ordinances as well. So we might be before you in early October with some ideas of creating, changing the ordinance to allow a setback planting going on people's lawns. And that would allow the city then to plant on private property. But the results will be tremendous once the cooling of that house, but also just cooling that that street at the same time. So we'll be more, we're kind of working with the law department and drafting that part of the ordinance as we speak.
Well, I'm sure Jesse and I would be very happy to look into that and support you. I wanted to ask, is it Gerard or is it Jared?
Are you muted, Gerard?
Hi, I'm Gerard.
Okay. How's it going in your position? It's a, I'm not familiar with exactly what it does, but I'm obviously it's a good thing that you're there. So what would be like some of the things you would be doing?
Oh, certainly. I'd be happy to talk about that. One of the things that I've been doing, working very closely with John Carrigan, obviously, he's my immediate supervisor. And my job is to make sure that we're being as energy as efficient as we possibly can. I've been in in all the schools and we've been working very hard doing lighting upgrades in majority of our schools. And you can see in the slide presentation that we touched on that. But I wanted to dovetail into what Pat was saying. You know, one of the, one of the benefits now with Eversource taking over the the gas end of things, I, Eversource is going to be releasing funds for gas upgrades and the things that Pat was talking about chillers, motors, things like that, things that are driven by by gas. There's going to be incentives there and I'm going to be working very closely with the utility over the next several years. Because I think all the things that we were doing on the lighting side will now be able to transfer into the gas side. We're fortunate that we have a good relationship with the utility. And I worked very hard to keep that relationship going. And I'm also involved, as Pat had mentioned, the the EV stations. And another thing that we were working with, and I'm very glad that we were able to do. One of the things that we're doing now is net metering. Because as Pat said, we don't have room within the city on some of our older buildings. There are offsite locations where we take that energy, the the net metering, and we we buy those credits. So that way we can reduce our energy costs in the city at the same time availing ourselves of using solar energy. So that's something that I've been very involved with under under Pat's tutelage, make sure that we're doing everything we can in regards to solar and electrical reduction. And more importantly, looking into the future. Because I think we've done a great job with the lighting. I think things are going to start transferring into the gas side of things. And as Pat just said, 233 Allen Street was an example where we switched from oil to gas. We're saving energy there. And I think that there's efficiencies that we can use with some of our older equipments, Pat said, the circle in 1985 schools. They're looking at equipment replacements now because they're reaching their service lives. And so I think the timing is going to be very beneficial for the city with Eversource now taking over the gas end of things.
I'm so glad I attended this meeting. Now, most, I think when people think of the parks, I don't think they have any idea. They think more recreation, all the good stuff that you guys.
I'd also want to add, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and has been very, very important. Catherine Ratain has been tutoring me and helping me. I just have to tell you, the support that I get from the community is incredible. I'm, I feel really, I feel really proud about that. I'm very happy with what I'm doing with the city. I'm happy to be part of Pat's team. And I just want to emphasize, next to Pat, nobody loves trees more than I do. Glad that we're, you know, we're making this effort to get trees planted. And I'm really pleased with the community feedback that we're getting. It's it's terrific. And my favorite place to walk, I love walking in Forest Park. I think it's it's the gem of the city of Springfield. There's no question about it. Most people don't realize that Central Park, which, you know, I'm an ex-New Yorker, Central Park and Forest Park were designed by the same man. And it's just a beautiful gem right here in our city and I love it.
We're lucky, we're lucky to have it. Hey, Pat, you going to make any predictions on how many people might need those electric charging stations? Do you think that's, what do you think?
I think that's going to be a slow start. You know, unfortunately, those cars to me are still expensive. But I think, you know, hopefully prices will start coming down. And these are free to the city. So why not take advantage of it and and get them installed now while the utility companies could install them for free? So and that's, we've been very clear to the utility company that we don't have the funds. They started off where we would have to match them and they came back to us coming up with a free program. So how do you turn that down? So it's just going to have us prepared for the future.
Keep up your good work, guys. You have great staffs both of you.
Thank you, councillor Walsh. So just a quick time check, it's 5:45. We have one other agenda item. And then so I, and then these, they're sort of connected. So the greenhouse gas emissions inventory was conducted at the same time as the plan was written. You know, given the plans, specific goals of pollution reduction, emissions reductions, I think we have some idea of its success from the numbers that that Pat, your department, has been tracking. But in terms of overall reduction, I'm wondering, Catherine, you had mentioned about applying for additional funds for an updated greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So can you speak to that and what the timeline and process for that will be? Because the last time this was done would have been 2017. So we're a few years out now from the last inventory.
Right. And it was, yeah, it was actually 2016 and it was probably based on 2015 data. So, yeah. So what the the Department of Energy Resources has a new opportunity this year for the green communities funding technical assistance. And it was only $3,000 per municipality. So Springfield requested that funding. We applied on behalf of all our communities. And we will hear on August 6th which communities are funded. So we hope that the city will be funded for the $3,000, which is obviously does, it's not what we had when we did the citywide inventory with the Climate Action Resilience Plan. So we are collaborating with UMass Clean Energy Extension. And they have been working on behalf of the region and, well, the Commonwealth to develop a simplified greenhouse gas emissions inventory tool. And so we're going to be using that tool doing the best we can with the with the $3,000 worth of funding and then, you know, looking for additional funding to do a full, robust assessment of the status, you know, where we are in terms of our 80% by 2050 goals. So it's going to get get a start, but it's not going to be as comprehensive as we were able to do back in 2016 when we had, you know, $100,000 for the plan.
Yeah. I mean, well, the greenhouse gas emissions inventory didn't cost $100,000 though. How much did the greenhouse gas emissions inventory cost?
Well, that portion, it it might have been 10 or 15 because what we did is we used the ICLI Local Governments for Sustainability greenhouse gas emissions tool. And it's a very not, you know, comprehensive tool. So it requires a significant amount of data collection and so it was more expensive than than this tool will be. But yes, you're right. We can probably make really good progress with the tool from UMass. And there's a likelihood that we can get students maybe to supplement some of the work. So yeah, we should have a good, we should have a good result, assuming the city gets funded. Our plan is to do the greenhouse gas missions inventories, you know, in the first six months of the of the funding, which would start in, you know, September. And then that will lay the foundation for the scoping plan for the net zero emissions planning, which again, to update the goals from 80% by 2050 to net zero emissions by 2050.
It would be important to me that the greenhouse gas inventory that we do is is comparable, if not surpassing what we did in 2015. So I think, you know, I'll have some conversations with the administration about possible other funding sources. I think $3,000 just may not be enough to really do what needs to be done. And certainly, there's there's other resources we could call upon. We're definitely trying not to treat the COVID recovery funds as, you know, a honeypot, so to speak. But, you know, I will say that they're pretty broadly defined in terms of how they can be used. And COVID, you know, there is a direct correlation between pollution and the impact of COVID on cities like Springfield because of the increased respiratory risk. So, you know, that's one possibility. I mean, if we're just talking about the difference between 3,000 and 15,000, I think we should be able to find that either through a grant or through other municipal funding. So I'll certainly reach out to the administration about that because I think it's important. I mean, we spent all this money on the plan. I think we should make sure, you know, we're tracking its progress as well as we already have to this point, you know. Would you agree?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have one comment on that as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
With the US Forest Service, they've agreed to do a study of Blunt Park. It's a natural white oak forest stand. There's a tremendous amount of slash and they're going to be studying the amount of carbon that that slash is decaying and giving off into the atmosphere. So that's another factor. We have over 3,000 acres of open space. And how does all this rotting wood infect the environment and so forth? So they're going to start that study in Blunt Park. And hopefully, I think they're going to start this fall.
That would be very telling. All right. Well, I think that that's a great, I think that's a great place to to be with the update. I think in the future, you know, we try not to go past an hour. We want to be respectful of folks' times. I think in the future, we could talk about, you know, some some future goals around the plan. Certainly, the nature of the plan as a living document is important because we're learning more about how this is evolving all the time. And we're also learning about our our new needs. I just have one last question for you, Pat, which is one that comes up often when we're talking about putting our our school projects together. And we appreciate hearing always that they're solar ready because we, as you mentioned, the the older buildings are a challenge to put solar on. So what what do we need to do to to get to that next stage for the the two new schools of getting the solar on them? Is it just a matter of identifying the funding source?
Yeah, it's just all comes down to cost.
And what's what's the, do we know the total cost of solar on them both?
I don't. So I'll, we just opened that bid for brooking. So I haven't even seen the results of that. Pete Garvey had shared with me last week that it looked like it was headed in the right direction. So I think in about a month, I may be have, could answer some of those questions.
Great. Yeah, if we can get the total cost, you know, probably just for the two new ones to start. And then, you know, because if we could find a way to do that, the two new ones plus brookings, that's a great start, you know. Guys have worked very hard on getting that there for years, but I think that would be positive. So that's all that I have for today. Councillor Walsh, did you have anything to add?
No, I mean, people have asked, answered my questions throughout the meeting. So I appreciate that. It's just, again, I I think the information that we're sharing is very powerful and I'm happy to hear all these good things.
We appreciate you both doing a joint meeting on the subject too.
Yeah. And again, if there's anything that we could help you with, Pat or Catherine or Gerald, we'd be happy to do it.
Great.
Thank you.
We'll plan to check in again in the future. And thank you all for your attendance this evening. Have a great rest of your night.
All right. Take care now.
Good meeting.